This time I'll call the meeting to order. And the board will stand in person.
Thus the reasons to fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Okay, tonight Carol will not be with us. Her mother passed away on Sunday, I guess, so she is not. And Mike will be taking the minutes. So you get the roll call this time.
Okay, Jerry Long?
Here.
Arthur Zerby?
Here.
David Lineback?
Here.
Elizabeth McGovern?
Here.
And Michael Reiner is here. Carol Martin is absent.
Okay, at this time we have a community, our public comment session, and I limit it to four minutes each individual. So at this time you'll be given an opportunity to speak. We give everyone a chance to speak, and then the board can respond accordingly. So, does anyone who wish to speak tonight in the public comment session? Yes, just state your name for the...
Sheriff Arthur Stephanie Fire Chief for five pointville Fire Company. It's been brought to our attention, you guys are well aware that the county has switched radio systems to the P-25 system. That's been in effect now for about the last year, year or so. With that being said, going in the future, December 31st, 2020, they're forcing all the fire companies to switch to a P-25 pager. At the cost of roughly about $750 per pager. So we're looking between us and between Five Pointville and Bonesville, we're looking at roughly about $40,000 each company is going to be spending for pagers, just to alert our members that there's actually a call. So we just wanted to kind of make the township aware that this is kind of an expense that we're going to be going through here in the next probably year, year and a half. It was something that we don't really have a choice in. We're kind of being forced to it, and unfortunately it is what it is.
What does P-25 mean, you're standing?
That's just the frequency that they're using. Basically, it's, it's not really a high-band frequency. It's a, it's what, three or four, somewhere in there. It's not really, it's a higher band, but there's still dead spots. Breckon Township is known for dead spots, just because of the hills. Unfortunately, wherever, we don't have coverage with a P-25 radio, we're not going to have coverage for our pagers either, which that would include like Yellow Hill, out towards Maple Grove Raceway. Berks County, we only get it more than a mile into the county, so it's kind of a frustration that we've been living through for a little bit.
So right now, the county commissioners have their plea to possibly do something for us. I mean, it's with every company in the whole county. Like you said, Bonesville is by far the worst. Between us and Addis Town, Church Town, we're the three that have the most problems. There are buildings that our radios don't work in. The newest and best radio won't, won't work. So basically, we brought up to the, at the Fire Chiefs meeting, brought up to the radio board, and said, "Are we less important than Manheim Township, you know, and Field?" And they basically said, "You have another channel you can switch over to, but we don't know when we're going to lose radio contact. More likely you're going to be inside the building when you lose contact."
Which that becomes a safety issue.
So there's two issues. One is coverage.
One is coverage, and one is the expense of the pagers.
What did they say the new tower would cost? They could put a tower up at Thomas, but they won't.
It's in the millions. It's like $3 million to put a new tower up.
Well, if there's anything we can do to help that process, let us know. Thanks for making us aware of it. No questions?
I guess you discussed it already in your meetings. You discussed it already in your meetings.
Oh yeah, absolutely, yeah. Some, some of this information is just, so we had a zoning meeting last, it's next Tuesday, right? Last night we had a zoning meeting, and some of that information was just shared with us there, and also at the county chiefs meeting.
Was it brought up already about township assisting in paying some of it, already?
No, none as of yet, nothing. Nothing was mentioned for Breckon Township, put it to you that way. But we just want to make you guys aware that that's an expense we're going to be having going forward.
It is possible you might get some help from the county.
At this point, we haven't got a yes or a no, so it's kind of still in limbo. But we just want to keep you guys updated as best as possible.
And this will be December?
Next year, next December, not December, yeah. So they gave us a year, however, they also stated that at the end of the month, the pagers are going up another $50. Shocker there. So...
It might be smart if... It's possible to get grants?
Well, I think we're going to have to see. We appreciate you bringing it to our attention, but I guess there's still some things...
There's still some stuff we need to go through. However, we just want to let you guys know that we're going to try and do all, everything we can to get coverage for the county commissioners or what have you. We're going to try and go through all that avenues first, and it's also all that.
I think what Nelson said was, "We justify for a federal grant, and sometimes you don't get it two years in a row." Some companies do. Here's your Bonesville one. We justify for a very big one from federal. So if we don't get any help there, we're out for a grant. But Nelson was saying maybe now going as a township to the federal grant, like if you attach both companies together with the township's name, that would help the fire company itself.
Was there any talk consideration to go to the state rep, Mark Dillon?
They were all there, yeah.
Oh, they were all there? Oh, okay.
Yeah, so the county commissioners, the new fire commissioner was there, all the reps were there. I mean, basically, any legislator that was in Lancaster County was basically at that meeting. Because obviously, we're not the only two fire companies dealing with the same issue.
There's, there's other fire companies that have dead spots, probably?
Well, not as much as, not as, we're the worst.
These three are the worst in the whole county.
These three?
Church Town, Addis Town, and Bonesville. And like he said, Maple Grove, we're out. We went to Berks County to try and get a radio. It's possible. It's very possible. The same radio will cover the Berks County and Lancaster County, but it's a political game that they're playing, and they will not issue us a Berks County radio. So it's almost forcing, you know, the public sees us not running to the closest fire company. That's because we have no communication with the closest fire company. Back at Maple Grove, you're not going to see us working with, rare enough, like we would like to, because of the, the games that politicians are playing with their radio frequencies.
It becomes a huge safety factor, especially on the Pennsylvania turnpike. Bonesville covers from, basically, all the way down Warrior Town, all the eastbound lanes. And once you get down past there, you have no radio coverage.
I heard, I heard the same thing. It costs close to $1 million to put a tower in Addis Town to eliminate some of them dead spots. Well, keep us posted. Now, is there anything we can, comes across our attention likewise?
Actually, if there's any new information, almost every month, you ought to know it, you know it. Yeah, every month.
Well, and that's why we're trying to be proactive, at least kind of not throw it on where nobody was aware of it, and then all of a sudden the company can say, "Hey, guess what, we exhausted everything." So...
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, just state your name.
Bill's in Happy Little on Horizon Drive. I'm here, just, we have a swell issue in that section. We have an underground waterway, and what we call, lack of, that I believe you folks came out to check out a year ago, instead of it working perfectly. My neighbors and I are digging trenches to get water to get to a swell or get to a drain, and just on that street alone, and behind my house. So I'm just wondering if somebody can come out and take a look at, just Horizon Drive, from what I know, and see how that water system is working or not working. I mean, I get in my driveway redone this spring because I got a pothole on my driveway from the water just rolling and sitting there. It's not going into the drain pipes, it's not going, it's not sinking into the underground piping that they said they have underneath there. It's not doing anything, it's just rolling across my yard and destroying my driveway.
That's the same as Oofield too. I have a safety problem. I believe Carol sent some photos to you, Mike?
I've received nothing, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's the first I'm hearing about it.
I, I sent Carol an email with some photos as well. My backyard is the same way. It's like a pond, cake and grass, any roots. There's definitely a swell issue, like Bill said, that needs to be addressed.
Standard procedure...
And I have drains in front of my house. There is a set system there that's just, the only reason why the drain fills up with water is not from the system, is underneath, is because the drains come into it. The other part of the system is just not working, it's not going. Like I said, I neighbors actually hand digging these, to try to get it through.
As I was going to say, the standard procedure is to submit a complaint to the township in writing about what the issue is, and then if we're directed to go out, we'll go out. I do know that in the past, we've had issues with subsurface runoff from groundwater, which we do not regulate. So that may be part of the issue. I don't know that for certain until we go out.
I do know that there's property two houses down from mine, that the swell seems to be have, have a big fill in. It's probably a foot higher than everybody else's property, and mysteriously that's dry. And it just puddles, puns the whole way back through. So...
Horizon. Okay, you go in behind Weaver Store, and you get to Horizon, you make a left. Which house you live?
I'm on the fifth house on the left.
On the left, okay. Because I've worked across the street already. I've worked across the street already.
One, you, you went into Doug and his yard?
What's his name? Weaver? Was it Weaver?
I don't know his last name, it's a person. But it's his yard, he, there is, there's little piping underneath his yard. Mine has, my side has the grain line going underneath it. That's not working at all. He went in there and supposedly checked a year ago, and like I said, the only water that ever fills up in the drainage dish are, are coming from the sky. Nothing from the ground's going in and moving, like it's supposed to be.
Problem with pipe?
And it runs all the way up the whole street and all the way down. You can just, all the way down, like I say, I got a pothole on my driveway and everything just from it.
That's a stormwater pipe that goes down to the corner of country, Horizon and Country. And that's a pretty good-sized pipe?
Well, it's in that area.
Yeah.
Well, as, as our township junior said, submit, notify the township office what the problem is. We're not responsible for private property. And when the developer puts in, a development that puts in stormwater and stuff and that, and then turns it over to the street for us, we do not take responsibility for outside the street.
We were informed last year, we did call in about this containment checkout, that it was part of the system the township put in, or was told to put in, part of the swell, and then put in front there, and since it's five feet, not even five feet from the road, it was zero feet, they informed us it was their property, not mine, I take care of. So...
Again, we can talk to the, the office, and then we can take a look at it, and have Mike, Mike come out and take a look at it. But, you know, we're just, we're just ram guessing at stuff now, right here. Been the wettest, wettest year record, so a lot of you had wet, wet yards, and you can't control that. But if there's a problem with the system, we can help you identify it, but we're not, we're responsible for it, is another, another decision then.
All right, I'll be right back. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Same thing with him, if he wants to submit.
Yeah, my assistant did. I, Carol's been informed of it, I sent her an email, so I'm sure Mike will be able to answer it. Obviously, with her death, I'm probably...
Was it recently you submitted it?
Last week, so obviously she was dealing with it.
That's probably, yeah, that's, that would make sense.
We just understand.
Right.
Okay. This time we'll move on to our agenda items. We have a public hearing scheduled for tonight, and I'll ask our solicitor just to explain that the legal parts of it have been taken care of.
Sure. This is a zoning ordinance amendment, and this amendment was given to the local county planning commission for review. Our township planning commission also reviewed it. The supervisors authorized the advertisement of this ordinance amendment, and it was advertised in the paper twice as per the municipality's planning code. It was, I'll just briefly describe it, and I'll turn it back over to the chairman. This is amending the residential median district to revise lot area density regulations for townhouses and apartments by amending Article VII, Section 11039, entitled residential uses, to revise the performance regulations related to townhouse and apartment filings. So I'll turn it back over to the chairman to basically describe what this is all about, and how the supervisors and the planning commission came up with this amendment.
Yeah, this, this I would maybe classify as almost a curative amendment. It was something to cure or to fix some discrepancies in the existing township zoning ordinance, which was, and it only applies to the RM district, and it only applies to townhouses and apartments. The, I found out that the, our zoning ordinance from nineteen, late 1970s, 1980s, had exactly the same language that was currently, and we did not have a maximum density for apartments. We did have a maximum density for townhouses, but then we had discrepancy at one place. We said townhouses. The definition of townhouses was one unit, I mean, three units, and not more than six units. Another place in our ordinance, it said, "Townhouses shall not be more than 10." So we just simply corrected that, and in our RM, the maximum number of townhouses, meaning one single structure, would be six. And then the maximum density of townhouses per acre in our ordinance was 10, but it said 10 unless they're on individual lots, which meant there was no, there was no density, there was no maximum density if they were on individual lots. So we clarified that, and basically said the maximum density of townhouses is 10 per acre, whether they're on individual lots or not. The other thing we added, there was no maximum density for apartments. We've added the maximum density for apartments is eight per acre. And we just had a resident is attempting to put eight on an acre, and that pretty much maxes that out. That's pretty much, so that is, is a good guideline. And then the other thing, again, it only applies to townhouses and apartments where the minimal lot size will be 10,000 square feet. That applies to apartments and townhouses. You could have, you could have three townhouses on that 10,000 square feet, but it kind of eliminates the, the very small 2,000 square foot lots, which, at 2,000 square foot a lot, you could have, you could have 24 per acre, and it was a density that is more suitable for public water, areas that have public water. And so that's just like, like we stated, it's about four, five, or six little corrections that are just made to clarify this. And that's why I kind of call it a little bit of a correction to the existing zoning ordinance. So this is a public time for any of yous that might have questions concerning this, before the board will deliberate any further on this. Like I say, townhouses and apartments are only permitted in the RM district, which is one of our largest residential districts. It encompasses pretty much Bonesville and, and Five Pointville. And it only, this only applies to apartments and townhouses. It just eliminates the real severe density in those areas. Okay, any discussions for the board? As our solicitor said, the, it was recommended, a recommendation by the planning commission to make the changes, and Lancaster County Planning Commission both acknowledged that it is consistent both with their county comprehensive plan, and it's consistent with the Elanco Regional Comprehensive Plan. If there's no discussion, I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation of our planning commission, and we acknowledge the county's statement that is consistent with both their comprehensive plan and our comprehensive plan, and we adopt this, these changes to the amendment, and adopt ordinance number 221-19, 2019. Okay, we had a motion, it was second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion parrot. Okay, at this time, we have guests here tonight. We have Hershey Survey, and we have two guests, I mean, representing two, two individuals. So if you want to just go from one right to the next?
Yeah, that'd be great. I think you have, which one do you have on there?
We have the Hilltop.
Well, good evening, my name is Ron Hershey, I'm a Hershey survey. So tonight we're processing, going through an add-on plan for Blakely and Sessick. They live at 1341 Hilltop. Their existing property is this property in the middle, right here. They recently purchased this property. One of the reasons to buy this was to acquire a little additional land that was back behind this property. As we were going through the process, we also identified an encroachment. This is kind of going up the hill in the woods. Property lines probably weren't real closely distinguishable when they built different things. So there's a utility building that's over here, that's just over the property lines. It's part of this plan, we're trying to clean that up as well. That's a 33, 1.33 acres that was acquired from the Schlock property. There's another property, another portion of this property was added to this, just to give it a little more frontage out front. So the remaining lands of Lot Two will be a little bit over two acres, which is this piece. Blakely's property, which is here in the middle, resulting land will be 5.3 acres in this area. And we've got three acres left over here for the, for the Schlock property after the add-on, the third acre on that side. We have received comments from township, but we really don't have any issues with any of those comments. If you want to go through any of them, I'd be glad to. Again, I don't see any issue with any of the comments or meaning of conditions of those comments.
There is a...
Go ahead.
There's, there's some waivers that we're looking at as well.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to chime in. There was a recommendation by the planning commission for two waivers, and then also a conditional final plan. The waiver recommendations would be partial waiver for shoulder widening improvements. They are providing the ultimate right of way on the plan. Recommendation of approval of the waiver request for monuments. They are providing iron pins and glue of monuments. And the final recommendation was conditional final plan approval compliant on addressing the March 8th review comments in my township engine letter.
Does that match yours? Two waiver requests?
That's correct.
And one conditional final?
That's correct, yeah. Partial, one partial waiver requesting, and one waiver for the monuments.
Right.
The partial would be the widening. The other half of that section of the ordinance refers to additional right of way provided.
Does the board have any questions or comments? Just Hershey? This is all, no, if I remember correctly, this one's in Ag, and these are in Forest Rec, is that correct?
Yeah, there, there are two different zonings. Yeah, the Schlock is on the Ag property, exactly. Yep, Schlock is on Ag, but this is a lot. Goes up here, and up here.
That create a problem down the road if you're zoning differently?
No, it really doesn't. There's a lot of properties that have zoning lines. Good to know this is, it, I mean, it's literally a sliver that's about 30 feet wide, that would be part of that property, but...
This is 30 feet wide?
Yeah, right, right. So it really doesn't pose any kind of use issues or anything like that.
That lot originally is of Schlocks?
Lot of the big, the...
A lot of Schlocks, listen.
Yeah.
Was that a lot individual by record?
Yes.
Not in...
Not a tract of a different piece?
Of the one across the road?
No, no, that's an individual lot.
Individual lot?
Yeah, yeah, individual, yeah. There's no approvals on it. Yeah.
And what savings left on that?
Uh, 3.1, 3.3, gross.
Anything else? Then I'll make a motion that we grant the two waiver requests, one partial and one for monuments, and then also for the conditional plan approval, per the letter and address all the comments dated March 26, 2019, by Technicon.
I second it.
The motion was made a second, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion parrot.
So the second, second plan is a, kind of a, we'll call it a new hill lot. It's up on Yellow Hill Road. This is, this is 48 Yellow Hill Road. It's about, I think, two houses in from the quarry entrance, maybe three houses in from the quarry entrance. See north of quarry would be to the rear. There's some other residential properties that are down here, but it's just up from the quarry entrance. There used to be, several years ago, there was a little home on this lot with a septic and well, and currently now there's a concrete pad there where the garage used to sit. So we're trying to utilize this small lot. It's, it actually looks bigger than it is, because this is like extremely huge scale, but it's not a very big lot at all. It's about two acres more or less, but it's really not very wide. It's 200 feet wide by 400 feet deep. It's very typical with this lots that are up there on that other side, up there, moving off that roof. So what we're looking to do is put a modular in, expand the existing stone driveway a little bit, and propose detached garage. As part of this process, our area of disturbance is 13,700 square feet. We're, we're looking to do this as a, as a small project component. Our new purpose is 2,800 square feet. So what we'd look to doing was propose infiltration trench for the roof drains of both the lodge and the house, and the, and the driveway. So we have a 1,400 square foot basically building. We have a 720 square foot garage, and about 1,000 square feet of this driveway will go into a, an infiltration system for this lot. There has this soils testing zone for the sanitary sewer. Its location is back here in the back, which is also part of the disturbing area for that sewage facility included there. We do have a comment letter from Technicon, March 8. That's the Hilltop one. Apologies. We do have a letter from Technicon. It's not dated March 8, it's dated March 25th.
25th, yes.
Yep. And...
I think the board did act on this.
That's correct.
Last month, allow you to use a small project.
The board supervised it, yes.
Yes, we did move on that last...
So I guess I'm looking at this, it says, it says the board will, will approve it at a public meeting, which is the ninth. I don't know, was, was your current meeting not?
Right.
Right, no, this was, actually, the meeting I missed last month, you remember, being on 6th. But, the only thing on the agenda tonight for the board's action would be to accept the financial security recommendation and also approve the stormwater agreement.
Okay.
So, that would be part, we can still do that tonight, and then you would be okay to go as far as building permits, wanting to.
Was there a submission from the contractor for the?
Cost estimate? I have that, yes, I do have that.
Carol Coleman said, are you going to be here?
Oh, okay. Normally, I would actually cover it under this, my engineer report. But, I mean, we can do it now.
That's okay, yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
That's fine.
So, this would actually be something I would cover under my engineer's report. Yeah, they're just looking for approval of this stormwater management agreement, which they have submitted, and I have a recommendation of $4,950 to establish the financial security.
You referenced, you referenced a letter, or a letter dated April 4.
April 4 would be the letter.
Did you mention something about March 25?
The March 25th letter actually just is an approval letter for the stormwater, provided they give us the cost estimate and also the stormwater agreement.
So, tonight's action is just I am number 5.
Correct, yes, yep, yep.
Carol asked me, I'm like, well, I'm going to be there.
That's no problem. It'd be number 5 in my engineer's report.
Okay. I make a motion that we accept the stormwater management agreement between Brighton Township and Robert and Deborah Brooks in the amount of $4,950.
Okay, we had the motion, it was second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Sorry to jump out of order.
No, that's all right.
So, we've got number 5 and number 9 taken care of.
Yes, we're working on it.
Yeah, let's cross on the list.
Yeah.
Shorter list, that's all.
It's all good.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, our next guest is Pioneer Management.
Good evening. I'm Todd Schufel, Pioneer. I'm here this evening with Mr. Aaron Hoover, owner of He and the Enterprises and his wife Audrey. We were in front of the planning commission during the last meeting to discuss the project. The Hoovers are the owners of the excavating business, and they currently own an 8.7 acre tract located at 1529 Reading Road. The parcel is a landlocked parcel, zoned highway commercial. It's occupied by an existing residence and some barns, and the Hoovers are looking to relocate their existing excavation business onto the tract. They would live on the property and then also operate their business from the property. The Hoovers had us master plan the project, do quite a number of various layouts for their parcel. Ultimately, the Hoovers came up with the configuration you see in front of you. Configuration consists of 3 shop buildings, each consisting of approximately 11,460 square feet with a small office associated with it, a storage building, which is about 9,600 square feet, and a shed, which is 2,400 square feet. There would be ample room for truck turning and maneuvering, also for construction equipment storage. The parcel is a landlocked parcel, and it's located on the west side of Reading Road. Immediately across from Reading Road is the electric station. And the access to the tract is via an existing driveway, which is about 10 feet wide, and it's encompassed by an existing 50-foot right-of-way. And that right-of-way actually has a quadrupled wall at the end. With this proposal, the Hoovers would propose to widen the access drive to 24-foot wide where it connects to Reading Road. Obviously, they need to get a PennDOT permit, which we're in the process of doing, the PennDOT HOP. And then it would neck down after a distance of 100 feet to a width of 16 feet. The overall drive length is, if I recall correctly, it's about 700 feet, so it sits back quite a bit. We are in receipt of Mike's review letter. I believe that was dated March 22. During the last planning commission meeting, we did discuss in detail quite a number of items. Majority of those, however, are the various waivers that we're requesting, and there are a multitude of waivers, which range from access drive design based off of the order's requirements to existing features that encompass the surrounding area. We don't take any issue with those waivers, or rather, those comments. The planning commission did recommend approval of all the waivers. However, there was one request where it was conditioned upon receiving comment from the authority. So, with that being said, I'd be happy to talk about each and every comment, if you like, each and every waiver, if you like. But, we are here this evening hoping to get conditional final plan approval along with the waiver requests.
I will add to the board here. The Homans, Mrs. Homan and Bob Homan were at the planning commission meeting, and we went down through all these waiver requests, modification requests, and they had, literally had no issue with any of them. And maybe you just could summarize them quickly, because a lot of them are just like little things, like you said, trails and existing features and.
Sure, maybe I'll jump in just to kind of summarize it, yeah. The March 26th letter in your packet summarizes the recommendations from the planning commission. Items 1, 2, just go down through them real quick. 1, 2, 7, 11, 13, all have to do with the access drive itself. And in a nutshell, what it talks about is typically an access drive has to be a minimum of 20 feet wide. What the applicant's proposing, because of the minimal use of the drive and the nature of the business and so forth, they're proposing the entrance off of 625. And you can see that they're actually proposing a wider entrance with larger radii out of, out of the access onto 625, and then a necking down approach so that you can get vehicles off of the road and provide some kind of staging area in that general area without widening and providing a whole lot of pavement for the remainder of the lane itself. There is good sight distance along that entire route. Pretty much see from one end to the other even with the distance. There is only 2 driveways coming off of that. Todd, is it 2?
1.
It's 1 existing? 1 existing, and then plus yours, obviously. So, again, we asked the property owner there if they had any issues. They were very helpful to provide that feedback, and they did not have any. 16 feet, I do have some roads in a lot of municipalities that are 16 feet wide. You can get 2 vehicles past, you have to go a little slower, but the chances of the, of that occurring, where you would actually have to have 2 passing on a regular basis is very minimal, just given the nature. The other waivers were all having to do with stormwater management, one way, shape, or form. A lot of the issues had to do with the lack of infiltration on the site. There was soil testing done throughout the entire property, very minimal, very marginal soil conditions. They do have to get an MPDS permit from DEP, so they have to satisfy all those requirements. But typically, the stormwater design that they're proposing would meet all of the intent of what DEP would be looking for, less the fact that they can infiltrate on the site. Obviously, soils can only do what they are capable of doing. So, that's one of the reasons behind those waivers. Some of the other issues all relate to the private improvements. If this would be a dedicated improvement for a street, for example, we may be looking at a little different consideration of the waivers, but a lot of the, well, not all, all of the issues on the stormwater site are all private improvements that would have to be maintained by the lot owner. So, any issues that they would have would be condition basically related to their site itself. Wouldn't have a relation to any kind of public network that would be maintained or owned by the township. Just trying to see if there's anything else in here. Todd, I think you hit on the, some of the other issues already.
Showing existing features surrounding the tract or existing.
Yeah, some of the literal, the literal requirements would have additional information shown. We feel there's enough information shown on the property related to the requirement. The loan issue was related to the use of a holding tank for the commercial property. That was the one that was recommended, that the planning commission wanted input from the sewer authority on that, because it is currently served by public sewer to the existing house. So, that would be something that they would be looking for input. DEP would also have potentially some input on that related to the use of the holding tank. So, if the board has any other questions, I can go over the additional waivers, but essentially, they were, given the nature of the scope of this project, they felt that they were justified.
The one other item that was discussed during the planning commission was the recommendation to add additional landscaping along the eastern property line, and the applicant has agreed to do that.
Yes, that's number 14 on your list.
Since the time of the planning commission, the applicant has discussed with his legal counsel, and actually has an agreement prepared for sign-offs of the PennDOT HOP with the adjacent property owner, Ms. Homan. There has been some correspondence between both legal councils, so we anticipate that that agreement will be signed here in the very near future. And then ultimately, we would move forward with the HOP, pending getting the acceptance letter signed by, by the township.
Quite a bit of floodplain area.
There's a large floodplain there, and a lot of wetlands.
No, uh, no idea to ever stick any buildings or anything in that. That's a large floodplain area.
It is. They had to provide a full floodplain analysis and wetland delineation. So, what you see there, I mean, you can see the large area that's depicted with some, I've asked for some additional notes on the plan related to future structures. They're not permitted to have any essentially in those areas, so there's some, there's some language on the plan to further, to further justify that.
It's, it's 40%.
Good dip.
Of that property, it looks like.
Todd, do you have any billy goats forming in the townies in the land?
No, but you can raise turtles. Be suitable for turtles. You raise, goats are high. Billy goat, an average billy goat's a hundred dollars. If it's a meat goat, 250 bucks right now. Unbelievable. Okay, we sold enough goats.
Well, the planning commission did recommend to the board to grant the waivers as are listed on page letter or letter of March 26, with one, with the one condition, with the holding tank, would be conditional approval based upon no negative feedback from the authority or DEP. And I guess the, again, we just wanted to have both the authority's position on that and DEP's position. And if there's no negative reaction to that, we'd either approve it based on that condition that there's not a negative response. So, if there's no other questions or comments, I would make the motion that we all, we do grant the waivers as listed and requested on the, and identified on the March 26 letter from Technicon. And I could say with the condition on that sewage tank.
I second it.
Okay, the motion was made to grant the waivers, and it was seconded. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Plan approved. I was going to bring that up, yeah. That was one of, yeah, I was, we can just amend, I mean, we can amend the motion if you'd like, potentially, just to accept the conditional approval along with waivers. Yeah. I was writing.
Oh, amend that motion to include the final, what is the term?
This final, conditional final plan based on the Technicon of March 22.
Yeah, got it.
Have a great night, thank you.
Is there a second?
No, second.
The motion was made a second. Those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is the minutes, but Carol's not even provided the minutes. I think we should be, so we'll have to table that until next meeting. Do you have the bills to be paid for the month of March? Is there any questions or comments that you might have on the bills? And if not, is there a motion to?
I make a motion that we pay the bills for the month of March in the amount of $97,290.45.
I second it. Okay, the motion was made to pay the bills as they listed, and it was seconded. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, we have your reports. You have the roadmaster's report. And I think he's not here tonight.
Let me tell you a couple things. I met with Soil Conservation yesterday, and they've done projects like this other places, including where they put trotting for fish. So, they explained it very well. And instead of 2 places that will hold water, they're going to go with 3. And.
You mean for the fishing?
Well, just to hold it.
Oh.
Yep.
Deeper, deeper areas.
Yeah, yeah. And, no, I only have one question. I should have asked them. We're talking $50,000 here. Township, don't pay a penny. They're not looking for any township help. But yet, he stated Brewbacher are going to do the work. Doesn't, isn't this when it's soil conservation have to go out on bid?
I have no idea, but.
Well, that's the thing I should have asked.
I don't know how that works.
I don't either.
I would say that they would take care of that.
Do you know?
Because this is, this is not the first project.
Yeah, I.
Year after year.
Honestly, I think that they take care of that. We read their contractual documents, and we didn't have a problem. It wouldn't be on the township at all.
Yeah.
The while goes since we read everything, but it was.
Can they just hire who they want or?
Well, sometimes they get unit prices approved.
Yeah, some, you know.
And then you can, you can accept bids if they're within that unit price.
Yeah, I'm not totally familiar with how they, I'm sure they have some process.
They have some process.
Caveat. Yeah, I would think so.
They're going through, they have a whole.
Yeah, yeah. I ran into GCs that were pre-qualified to do small projects because they had to meet certain unit prices.
And, okay, I talked to Andy, and both you looked at the bridge.
Okay, let's get back. So, we're okay to sign the easement agreement?
Oh.
On the, on the streams.
Yes, yes. That there. Now, I talked to Andy about the bridge. I missed his phone call. He said, both you looked at it. He told me it's a steel pipe, double pipe?
Double pipe.
How big?
8 foot.
8 foot what?
8 foot diameter. We're talking about the bridge at Souders, right before you hit the Souders garage, both, both end walls are mezzery, completely closed in. And so, there's 2 8-foot corrugated pipe that runs under the road. Both sides are intact, there's nothing washed out, but the center of the road has given away, and there's like 3-foot drop. And I think Andy stretched a tape measure, and he goes, if you're heading south coming off of 625, on the, on the right side, almost the whole lane is void underneath. On the other side, facing rest trucking.
That's what the pipes look like.
On the other side, it seemed to be still fill and solid underneath, but the whole right lane is just being held up by blacktop there, and it started, it started to break through.
Yeah.
A bus could have gone across and just simply sank right down to its chassis.
Okay. And then here's, here's the thing. And then here's the thing, we always gotta say, you know, pipes like this are gonna cost...
Well, I think... And would you replace galvanized corrugated pipe? Would you do like a box culvert bridge or whatever? And do we really... Are we gonna look at replacing the pipe or just trying to put a Band-Aid on under the road? Because the pipe could last another 10, 20 years?
Yeah, but the way that looks...
Concrete at the bottom.
But the sides are probably gone.
No, the sides are fine.
It's just from there up.
It's just... This is all there.
Yeah.
But then how'd you get the weight on the top?
Don't know.
That's where it must've sifted down in them roots.
Well, it had to go down.
Because it can't go out the ends.
Right. So there has to be a weight outside of that pipe somewhere.
On the top. It's all galvanized and holding the rocks from the water level up.
I thought it looked, when you look in the left, I mean, the west one, yeah, it looks like the top might be built a little bit.
Like, but there's no holes or...
It's not really a part to cut through.
You better take this, you're getting love notes. You're getting...
Well, I think to replace the whole... Well, first of all, I think he needs to take the blacktop off and discover how big the void is.
Well, I can't believe there's a hole in the road.
There's a little hole in the road.
Yeah, and when you look down in, I should...
I put the flashlight down inside, and it's like three feet down and as far as you can see toward the one side.
Ten foot, actually.
So that side has to have a void along the pipe.
Well, I think what's... I think it's centered around the pipe.
Pipe or 12-foot center to center part. So there's probably six foot or something in the middle. And that's where the hole is, right?
All the holes in the middle.
Yeah, yeah.
Almost that center in between the pipes.
See, the integrity of the pipe seems to still be there.
Right, and most of the time, most of them are, a lot of them.
Yeah, and it doesn't look like they've settled.
I guess you're right, take the blacktop off, see what's there on the top. And then if you can fill the bottoms with concrete and fill that middle with concrete...
I don't think we're gonna see a middle. I think they're gonna take the pipe off and just gonna see a reset...
Big blacktop, a big dig down in the pipe if you don't...
Well, but... I don't know. I... My first thought was, do you treat it like a sinkhole and use global grout or something?
Well, with a pipe like that, though, that'll continue to wash away.
And the pipe won't hold its structural strength if you don't have...
It has to be coming through the ribbed areas with a heavy rains and a force going up the sides, loosens little by little, and somewhere it's broke loose, and the top's coming down.
It didn't appear like it's coming through the pipe.
Then how'd you get the hole in top?
It has to be coming through the...
Somewhere along the pipe.
That big hole, I mean, it's three-inch slot here. That's all caved out of it, rusted through in the bottom.
Didn't come down and through the pipe, where did the stuff on top go? Had to.
It's like a sinkhole.
Yeah, but...
Yeah, with the... I agree with Art.
Had to go around...
It's migrating around the outside of pipe, and if the bottom is not in anymore, it's migrating into the stream.
There's a void there somewhere along one of them pipes all the way down. And it'll only get worse as more and more rains and more and more squishing and more and more loosens up, and it'll get worse. You have to take the blacktop off and see what you've got.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
And go from there. I'm at the point now, I don't know if it pays the concrete that bottoms in.
Did you ever try?
Yeah, we did it. But you know what? It only lasts so long, and then you're replacing the pipe anyway. And do they make plastic pipe that big? No. No, you have to go with steel.
I think I found four foot is the maximum.
Yeah. That's a big pipe. You can only imagine what it costs.
Well, back to my initial thinking, is it something we need to Band-Aid it for two, three years and then replace it?
That's what you wanna do.
Well, I don't, I'm not sure. To tear the whole thing out would be huge. Is there... Mike, are you aware of any fabric that, say, they take it off, they find out that it's settled pretty much down, and you can pack that down and put down a layer of fabric so that moisture can't continue to get down through? And even like a mash that you would compact stone with a layer of this fabric on every foot, so it self-bridges, it self-bridges.
There's a lot of products out there. I mean, I would have to see... I'd like to put eyes on it and just kind of before I would say, use one versus the other, but there's a lot of products out there that you could use.
Because we can come some way... I mean, I know they put parking lots on swamps by putting down fabric and then enough grout and packing down, and it kind of bridges over the whole thing. You know, you mentioned that if, put the concrete over the top, but then at some point it has to be taken out. At some point, it needs to be replaced.
You took the blacktop off, find where the void is. There's gotta be a void there somewhere. Put rock in, it'll take at least number threes, maybe something a little heavier.
You don't think it's something tight? You don't wanna get something tight?
Well, you're gonna... And then concrete something on top.
If you find where the pipe is, where you think you're losing it...
I don't think there's... I think it's the whole way along, because if you look in there, it's not like a funnel or anything, it's just dropped from the center of the road, 10 foot to the north, and then another three foot to the south. Not like a funnel, it's just a crawl underneath there, the whole thing dropped. So I'm thinking it's going down along the pipe kind of the whole way along.
You have to take the blacktop off first.
Yeah, yeah.
You know? Oh...
I thought I might say this, since I was home store authority, you could probably pack up the glass. You could do it. Glass recyclers, they break it up into pieces that are a little bit bigger than small stones. The space will work, you go through, and you can keep laying it.
But then it will allow water to come up through then, too. If water is coming through the pipe and coming up into the glass or the valves, then you... I mean, it seems... I'm thinking it should be something around the pipe that seals, like a clay, a clay sub base or something that's tight.
The water damage is not going from the top down. The water damage is, well, it's coming through the pipe, the pipe rusted, it starts this squishing in here, releases the sediment, little stones, they fall in, and in time it hits this, you know, it looks like ribs of a skeleton that pinch or the whole bottom of the pipe. And this squishes more and more, and just loose... The damage is coming from the bottom up.
That's what I would say.
It's not coming from the top down.
So the place you know, bottom's all rusted down.
It's all gone.
But the sides look fine.
But it has to be...
About water that will...
About a quarter of the pipe has...
Not even half.
Not even half. Okay, a fifth of the pipe has water, the rest is still the solid.
But it's the water that comes down through the force and up, and then it loosens it?
It's just strange how... I mean, that's like, there's probably a truckload of fill, fill that up.
Well, what happened if we just could put it down and the pipe digging and put concrete there, from pipe to pipe?
You're okay, but eventually, eventually, it'll squish enough out of the sides to where even the pipe can collapse.
If it's still beneath the concrete, would it ruin away from the pipe? That would have a void, the pipe wouldn't be...
That pipe out here, I didn't realize it. When I looked at it on Pleasant Valley Road, that damn collapsed.
Yeah.
Folded in. I didn't realize it was that bad until we cut the water out.
Are you available tomorrow morning to take a look at that?
I'm not available tomorrow morning. I was gonna suggest to the board, it sounds like, I mean, if it's a public roadway, I mean, from a liability standpoint, I would think you would wanna have some investigation to try to come up with some different options, and then you can make a decision as far as, you know, Band-Aid, you know, partial repair versus full replacement. It sounds like there's a couple of ways to look at it, just depending on the circumstances of how bad it actually is.
Make a suggestion.
Yeah.
You have the most knowledgeable man working in the township that's zoning officers, he's done this kind of work all these years, let him look at it with you.
Did he get back from Florida yet?
Yeah, he's back. But let... Levi...
Are you in tomorrow morning?
Looking very tanned, by the way.
Because depends how bad it is, it might just... Maybe you'll need a new pipe replaced.
Well, okay, let's have Levi look at tomorrow morning, when he takes the blacktop off and and contact everybody.
I think I'll be taking it off.
Yeah, yeah.
You already asked him to?
Yeah, we said he was.
Oh, okay, okay.
I was out there around 5:30, and he just talked about it. Right now, it's closed to one lane. And they have trusses out in front of press trucking, and then up the...
With blinking lights.
Yeah, with blinking lights.
Yeah, this is the kind of thing that's ongoing. There's always stuff to be done on the road.
But if, would you replace it again with galvanized corrugated pipe if you had to?
It'd probably be cheaper than a box culvert.
It will be, yeah. But generally, you move away from the corrugated metal, just because of the same reason you're having right now.
They're all rusted out.
Well, the box culvert, I think we'd have to always have some, some kind of...
But I did a... I did a bridge one time, Art, where we poured...
It lasted a long time.
We poured a huge footer parallel with the stream, and then it was a steel corrugated dome, so it didn't have a bottom. And then they, we came in and coated that with tar before it was backfilled, and then we did the end wall. That was probably like an eight-foot round, just like, you know, just the top part.
Well, when you go to new bridge, they want the stream channel to remain.
Yeah.
You don't have that situation here. I think you'd be able much easier to get a box culvert in this situation than you could with a new bridge.
Yeah.
Because they want the stream to have to remain. And that's why you had to put it on both sides.
Yeah, yeah.
They're a mess.
Well, you don't like them?
No, I don't.
Well, we created a huge channel.
It does.
For what?
Yeah.
Takes weeks.
To do them?
Yeah.
Okay. Maybe you were faster.
Maybe you did a small bridge.
And not a perfect bridge. Okay, so you're gonna...
Yeah.
And then...
I don't have a degree, you know?
Did anyone say you have a degree?
We're looking at a box culvert, which is expected compared to... And then steel pipes have to be in there quite a while, years, compared to a steel pipe that even our roads issued.
I never see you got a little shirt, your masonry wing walls.
No, you don't. I replaced them and never took the wing walls down.
Really?
Yeah, you slide the pipe right in the hole.
Well, if you're going with the pipe, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But if we're going to a box culvert...
No, then you're gonna...
Yeah, it's a nice wall there, those things.
Okay, Levi will get with Andy tomorrow morning.
And then you'll get in touch with them, and you'll make a decision?
No, then we'll get in touch with you. He'll get in touch with you.
Well, he has to get in touch with all of us because we can't wait till the next meeting to make a decision, or we're gonna have to make one.
You can do that, because it's an emergency situation, and ratify the action at the next meeting.
Can we actually meet?
You can't be... You mean, out there all...
In an emergency situation.
In an emergency situation, yeah. We can ratify it, if you have to make any action, you know, take any action, we can ratify that action at the next public meeting.
Well, something will have to be done, there'll have to be some kind of action.
Right, and you can do that.
Okay, anything else in the Roadmasters report?
Yes, I did ask Andy while I was on the phone. The official llama?
Yeah.
Okay. I said to him, I asked him to get ahold of Wanda at the school. Because Wanda, every project in that park, she likes for her children to be involved. And I said to her about the rocks are gonna have to be stacked, stocked up to stock the trot. And she said, "Her children would love to get in that stream and stack them rocks back up," you know? So I told Andy, just before I came here, "Make sure you get ahold of Wanda." And hey, let the children play in the water, stack it up.
Is there any liability?
Don't they have insurance, the school?
Is it the school that is down there? Okay, yeah, it would be on them.
There's someone in the stream, and they fall and stuff.
Yeah, that's... Yeah, that would be...
The liability.
No, I mean, if you really wanna go the extra mile, you could have them sign a waiver, you know, so that they went back to the township.
I don't see that they really hurt themselves.
Wouldn't be much to say to anybody that was using the phone.
We got it. So I don't really feel it's necessary. I mean, they have insurance that covers, you know? I think you're going a little bit, yeah.
So with the children, they should build a nice rock, and just lay them across for their place for the trot.
I think that would be nice, I know, too. He loves to work.
Anything else in the Roadmasters report? Okay, let's move on to the engineers' report.
Okay, you have my engineer's report of April 5th, but we have several items tonight on page four. I'll just read the ones that apply tonight, and I have one addition that just landed today. Item number one is the Justin and Tanya game and stormwater project, financial security release recommendation in the amount of $2,000. Item two is the Dean and Dawn Martin stormwater project, financial security release recommendation in the amount of $2,860. Item three is the RJS Investments Land Development, issued a financial security recommendation to secure those improvements in the amount of $125,702.45. Item four is a financial security release recommendation in the amount of $7,728. We already did number five, so I'll skip that. Number six is the Horse Outdoor Power Equipment Land Development, financial security release for their stormwater project, the amount of $6,700. Item seven is the Daryl Nolte Stormwater Project. We just received that, that's under review. We have their memorandum of understanding for your action tonight. And one additional item that's not noted is the Meadows Phase Two. That's their final maintenance security release recommendation, the amount of $148,733.12. That would complete the dedication and as-built and everything else related to that development, to close that out.
And you're going out with number 10?
That'll be number... We'll call it number 10, yeah.
Well, let's see, how long is it?
I think that, you have a copy, or you may have received a copy just today, dated April 9th. I just sent that one over today.
So five of these are actually financial security releases?
Yes. Five of those.
Okay, is there any questions for the engineer? I don't have any. Is there a motion to approve the recommendations?
I'm making a motion that we approve the recommendations. I guess we can eliminate number seven.
Number seven?
The memorandum.
Yeah, that's just receiving.
You would just, you accept that, actually, yeah.
Okay. I'm making a motion we approve the recommendations from the engineer, as presented, the way he presented them.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the recommendations by the township engineer. And what second, if there's a aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, you have the, um, SEO and zoning officer's reports. Do you have anything you wanna add?
Nope.
Approved your golf game?
No.
Okay. Do you have anything?
No.
Anybody know anything about, about, well, we're not at the park yet, huh? Okay, okay, sorry.
Okay, there are a motion to approve the reports by the Roadmaster, engineer, SEO and zoning officer?
I made that motion.
Okay, motion is made to approve the reports, and what second, if there's a aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, we have the, uh, park and rec. So there are March meeting minutes. And they're requesting, uh, purchase more mulch. Two thou, uh, 100, I guess cubic yards, yeah, from Ziegler Brothers, the great playground mulch for a total of $2,304.90. Is there a motion to approve the purchase of the mulch?
I make a motion, approve it for $2,304.90.
Is there a second? Okay, the motion is made to second to approve purchasing the playground mulch. And what second, if there's a aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now-
The park.
Okay, I was gonna say, they, they referenced this, uh, survey, but I, it's not, it's made to sound like it's included, but I've not received any survey.
Okay, that's, I was, I was just gonna speak a minute on that.
Yeah, go ahead.
If, if, uh, they come in here and go back to when the park originally started, the survey was sent out to the people, they've already had a major response and it should all be in the bookwork, right there on that shelf, of what the people wanted. So it'll give them an idea right away. I know one of the main things wasn't, we didn't go along with it, was the swimming pool.
Well, I looked at that list and it is a number of pages.
Yeah.
But it is 25, 30 years ago now.
Well, how much change has been?
Well, I think we're looking for more, maybe a little more specific, uh, areas of interest. That was a really, well, you know, it is a good starting point.
Like that Cogga pit?
I don't think that was in there.
I've never seen anybody use it yet.
Uh, it's not here.
Was, is that, who, who said that?
My family uses it.
Did he use it? Is it fun?
Yeah, it's not bad. I guess I've found a way to explain the rules, that's all.
You kick, you kick a ball and try to kick each other?
Don't ask me or I have no idea, I lost it every time.
Yeah, let's, I think let them, um, refine something, I know, uh, they started, it was just a small, um, survey generated, like one sheet, uh, but yeah, the, the, uh, the original survey that was done as part of the park and rec plan is, is a huge, uh, source of, of information, but I would just say that 30 years ago needs change and maybe, um, I, I would encourage to have them update something.
Is it 30 years?
It was in the, um-
30 years.
Nineties.
Long time. I'm not that old yet. 30 years.
You were young then. I don't know exactly how long.
It was like 94, 95 when they purchased it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sure 25 was 30.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Okay.
You wanna take the time.
Nothing else on the park and rec? Okay, next we have Old Business. And the first item is, um, the Act 537 Plan. Over a year ago, we asked, actually, I met Michael, included Carol, others, met with Fred Ebert to, um, look at extending the sewer service area to include the, at that point, the recently rezoned highway commercial area. And also looking at the future growth map, which I think is, um, none of yous did that before. And also, um, to look at how we possibly handle an expansion of light industry in this area. And, um, it has taken, well, then Fred presented a proposal to this board and we accepted and hired him to conduct a study for, for updating the sewer service area. We met, we had one meeting with him like two or three weeks ago and we were just looking for some more information. Um, he wasn't quite sure what he was, uh, doing here and here and, and so I, I felt, I feel we need another meeting with Fred to, um, discuss this some more. And I guess at some point I'm asking permission here from this board that, that I and Mike and Carol and Levi would conduct another meeting with Fred, try to, uh, pin it down a little more. What you see in front of you on the, on the color map and what's written in, or what's written on the, in the red, is the allocation of EDUs per property. And it seemed excessive versus the area where, um, Grubaker has the trust shop, he was allocating 32 EDUs. And I, I really was challenging Fred if there's another way of determining EDUs for future, I, I mean, you don't wanna shortchange yourself, but the, the Grubaker farm up Trostal Lane, which, uh, which surrounds Jonathan Martin, will probably never get developed. But in order to make a contiguous, um, highway commercial property, we included that area and he has allocated 25 EDUs for that. I'd really like to try to get a more, let's say, a conservative number of EDUs, um, for future growth and if we have to do some area managing it where, um, the area is only allocated so much. Because the highway commercial uses, the golf cart shop, the Saunders Garage, the Earl Gaimans, the Amada Buildings, the Wise Masonry, uh, you'll see, they have meters on them. You have a copy of, of the meters, some of them are averaging one EDU per, well, they're averaging a quarter of an EDU per quarter. So some of these uses that just have one bathroom, um, it just seems that the highway commercial is not a, a, a high intense, uh, employee type businesses there. And I'm just thinking that, um, if, if it, he has suggested that we allocate 162 EDUs in that area. And if, and, and then that compounds itself when, when he uses a number of 275 gallons per EDU, which, I understand, you plan on the s- strong side, but the, the numbers I got from him, the Beam wastewater treatment plant with eight, with approximately 1,800 connection averages about 220 gallons per EDU. The Kramer Mill Package Plant averages less than 100 gallons per EDU. The Gaiman School Package Plant averages less than 100 gallons per EDU. Is, I don't mind if these figures are high quantity gallons per day, but let's not do double jeopardy and then have 32 EDUs on a property that looks likely won't use it. It's, it's a target, it's a moving target trying to identify the capacity of the plant and as Mike's in attendance tonight. Um, if this study would've been done in the end of 2016 or 2017 when, when we had normal years, it would've been a whole different ballgame than doing the study after we had 2018, which was the wettest year record. And I don't know if, if, if they can take an average, a three-year average on, on capacity and stuff like that, but-
There are, there are guidelines for the 275 gallons.
Yeah, I understand.
We don't have to stay with that.
Yeah.
For the township nobody, it's a DEP requirement.
Regulizing, um, established, uh, engineering practices, if he changes those, it puts a red flag up to DEP and the question is, what are you doing? You've been using a certain methodology, you need to stay with that methodology. I know what the methodology is, it makes sense. Um, we have no crystal ball, any of us, to determine if somebody like another food processing manufacturer wants to come in and use four or 5,000 gallons per day and they're gonna consume quite a few. We don't know what that could be because it is zoned and that is a possibility. So, um, to not put a red flag up to DEP and ask, why all of a sudden have you changed your method, your, your engineering practice to come up with those numbers is, is gonna be suspect to the state. And we wanna make sure that we plan, uh, long-term, that we don't get in a situation where we're writing more checks than we can cash with capacity to the sewer plants. Um, the package plants were set up because of non-compliance consent decrees. They were not just put in by the sewer authority for no reason, DEP required that because the groundwater was, was being contaminated. They don't have, you talked about flow, we have a BOD overload in those, in those, at least one of those plants, which means we're getting more biomass coming in than what the plant was designed for. So we have to deal with that permitting issue. It isn't just how many gallons come in, it's the concentration of what's, what's coming in that, uh, can also affect what you're permitted to do or not permitted to do. You could have, you could have 100 gallons a day per site using your rationale, but if your BOD loadings are too high, it's, it won't go anywhere with DEP. So Fred's, um, Fred's calculations and his methodology are proper for what we're doing. Um, a lot of times when you get into the sewer end of things, there's a lot of, um, technical requirements that people have, who don't work in the field, need to, uh, get up to speed. There's a lot to learn and there's a lot of, um, if, ands that can come into play that we, you know, just having this simple conversation, we're not gonna have enough time to go over. And I always encourage people, if you want to, uh, get more educated into why we have to do what we do, show up at our meetings, we're smaller groups than we have here and we, we'll, we take the time to explain to anybody who comes in why we do what we do. It's not by our choice, we are required to follow, uh, certain, uh, protocols. We have issues with, um, uh, inflow and infiltration, we're looking at that because if the flow rates are too high and we've had a very wet year, what occurs is we have no capacity to sell EDUs and we have no control over Mother Nature because it's based on a three-year average. Fred can certainly speak to it more than me, but, uh, and it tells us what we are committed to do and not permitted to do. And we have, we are working very aggressively in putting a plan together that we can manage on a year-to-year basis, uh, to eliminate a lot of the infiltration, uh, defining if , uh, some pumps are hooked up, some pump, one some pump can put as much water into the, into the sanitary sewer as 30 houses. It doesn't take long, you know, two gallons, two gallons an hour or whatever for a, for a house versus, uh, 15 gallons a minute coming out of a sewer plant, we've had, or out of a, a some pump. We've had some places, um, up off of 625 that had two some pumps running into our collection system 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It's, it just overloads, we're, we're treating rainwater. So this is a very big problem, which in the end, to the, to the Board of Supervisors, with this, how this negatively impacts everybody is we can't sell EDUs.
Yeah, and I, I don't think we're at the place now where either of us are throwing up a fence or a wall.
Sure.
It's, um, just that, and Fred indicated that there, there are options and stuff, so we just wanna continue to talk this thing through.
Right.
And that's what, um, I'm saying that, um, I'm not, I'm not here to tell, we hired Fred to provide his, uh, professional experience, but it don't hurt to say, Fred, that's, are you sure this is what you wanna do? Um, and if, well, he did talk about a way of, of a management, a, a plan that you, you could allocate, uh, numbers. So I really wanna follow up that a little bit and see what that leads to because initially it was sticker shop and it was a little bit like saying, you know, this is just totally unrealistic. And so he did do a comparison with the highway commercial that's currently there and all them were like one EDUs except two percent of King, King's thing. So, you know, it's like, you know, so yeah, and I, I just think that, uh, we're not quite ready to, 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 I'd just like to discuss a little more and I'd like to have another workshop with him and, like I say, include, uh, Carol and Mike and see if we really are getting a little bit of a better comfort of the story right now.
I'd just encourage you, if you have time, come to one of our meetings.
Yeah, yeah.
And there's a lot of information to change hands and hopefully you'll understand what we're doing, just like I'm sitting here, understand what-
Yeah, yeah, appreciate that, yeah. So I, we, so yeah, we're not ready to, to take direction on this, but I, and Fred was more than open to, to can have another sit down and talk about that because there were, there were some missing stuff he didn't have and, and apparently this time of year he's really busy doing some types of, uh, reports or something.
Yeah, and it's like, so- Just to add to that, Jerry, um, I actually did see an email from Fred's office, I believe it was either yesterday or today.
Yeah.
Carol's out, so obviously we'll, he will have some more information for you, so it probably is a good idea to have a meeting, uh, to go over what he's come back with, uh, 'cause I know Fred, Fred will have some different things for you.
Yeah, and, and Fred, yeah.
I'm sure he'll reiterate a lot of what we talked about the last time as well.
Of course Fred would like a workshop meeting with, with the entire board and I think at this point we're still kind of hashing some things out, so that's why I, um, basically asking my board members here permission to conduct another meeting with Fred and, and continue to follow on this before we present a final, final plan. It does complicate stuff with the wettest year on record.
Yeah, well, it's, it's been hard, like, you know, for, for example, we're dealing with takeoff overloads that we've never seen before.
Any discussion on that? That's where we're at. It's, um, I would just say it's still a process, a venture in the process yet, but we're not quite ready to come back with the recommendations. The, uh, the next, okay, we see it's under Old Business is the Cogga Ward and that was in a, you know, something that was handed here at the table. Before the, um, was the past month or the previous month that we authorized, and handy to submit quantities we did out in the, uh, February. Now, I'm not sure what, this is the first time we've seen this, which applies to, uh, township because this is the total, the total bid for Martin's page in the 640,000, I hope that's not just our town. Have you seen this, Mike?
No, this is for someone seeing it.
Do we have to have action this time?
Did you see it?
I looked at it, I saw it from the guy here. Yeah. I don't think it's just our town.
No, it looks like it's everybody, yeah.
It's the total, no, have all the numbers.
Well, I, I would think we should table this until there's a little more, um, clarification what applies to. But if we would have to have action on this part or next meeting-
Two or five.
Yeah.
We could get data, you know, see if they have a majority to whatever they wanna do and then you can ratify it.
I think there's other townships that have met before this, where they would have awarded by the Cog, uh, early in the month, so-
That they would have, yeah.
I mean, they would, they would have approved it by this time.
Okay, okay. Any discussion on that? Let, let, let them break out our portion before we, uh, approve it. Let, let, let them break out our portion before we, uh, approve a line check. Is there any comments? Okay, under new business, you have in your packet, they propose, Northern Neister County's proposed lateral ordinance. And we did see this about a year ago. We also had Roger Sarnik coming here to show us a video of a lateral they determined it had a lot of leakage. And I know some of us had some, uh, maybe concerns or just uncomfort, but I think we need to, um, forward to the planning commission to review and invite the Northern Neister County Authority to, uh, present it to the planning commission. They might have more time to discuss it and take more and more of the question and then look for them to make a recommendation to the board. And I would encourage you, this board member, to attend, uh, that meeting and we invite them to the May meeting to come and express your opinion and concerns at that point with the planning commission. So I guess my recommend, uh, my motion tonight would be to forward this proposed Northern Neister County Authority lateral ordinance to the planning commission to review and have the Northern Neister County Authority, um, invite them to the May planning commission meeting and either their manager or legal counsel to kind of explain what this, eight, nine pages long, so we want to be open. I, I do appreciate what the, uh, appointees that we placed on Northern Neister County and we appreciate your, your work and your intentions and we do want to seriously evaluate this and, and see if we can come to some type of, uh, favorable, uh, outcome. So that's my motion to forward to the Neister County Planning Commission and have Northern Neister County at the May meeting to, uh, to present it to the planning commission.
Jerry, can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Um, if you can give that information over to them early on, it may allow them to generate some questions, uh, at least as a starting point for the conversation. We don't have to start from a dead stop at the meeting. And that way, we are prepped to be able to provide whether it's a video or an, an established, um, response to help get things up and running and hopefully move us, move the ball, uh, as far forward as we can with the, the full intentions of providing good response with good education, uh, so that everybody understands what drives it, why we're here. So if they can come up with things based on what our document is, you know, give me five, give me ten questions that just jump out from those folks so we can prepare for that in a more, uh, professional manner.
Well, yes, and I appreciate that, uh, clause. The thought was that it would be in our, this month, April's packet and we would tell the planning commission that this will be discussed at our next meeting and try to, you know, review it and come with questions at that point.
Yeah, well, I, I just think usually if both sides are prepared to answer each other's questions, you're on a page of answering questions that, that help the planning commission. You know, who, uh, know what those questions are so, um, they appropriate responses so that they can, uh, get a better understanding to get done and why we're driving, so the impact is on, for the whole, the whole township.
Yeah. So I made a motion, is there, um, any discussion?
Yeah.
Your motion actually was, uh, like, it's county, 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 you're the Breck Knock township.
I'm the Breck Knock township.
I did too, yeah.
Township. And I rewind.
Yes.
No, yeah, in fact, the thought process may be that, um, we would discuss it briefly at the April meeting, invite you, have representation to the May meeting and then possibly then invite the township legal counsel at the June meeting.
Sounds good.
And then, I mean, I, I, there's a lot there. There's, I'm, I'm sure it's going to generate some interesting, um, discussion, but I think we want to understand what the, the objective is and to get there, that's the way to get there.
Yeah, one, you get a, yeah.
Yeah. So the motion to forward to the township planning commission and have Northern Neister County, uh, have representation at the May meeting to, to discuss it. I second it.
Okay, the motion is made.
Seconded.
Aye.
Aye.
Excuse me, Jerry. I did, I did text Carol about the quantities.
Yeah.
Um, and I do have those, uh, she did suggest, uh, we do have to have action on the unit prices, um, of the individual highlighted items that are on this sheet. Um, I can read to you what the quantities are for Breck Knock Township. You would just need to approve the unit costs that are noted in this highlighted form. So we're talking about just the, the per linear foot or the per, per square yard unit costs.
Okay, well, yeah, if, if, so all the ones that are in yellow.
Yes.
Are required for, uh, linear footage.
That's correct. So there's three items.
You got line striping, ultra-thin bonded and wearing course.
And the wearing course or the, uh, chip seal.
Chip seal, okay.
Yeah, chip seal.
So, okay, then I'll make a motion that we approve the unit pricing for line striping. The single yellow four inch at forty, at four and a half cents per linear foot. The single white four inch wide line at four and a half cents per linear foot. The double yellow four inch wide line at nine point two cents per linear foot. The ultra-thin bonded wearing course, the ultra-thin bonded course type B at six dollars and thirty-four cents per square yard and the chip seal, um, the CRS two PM chip seal at a dollar and eighteen and a half cents per square yard.
I, I second it, but I have a question.
Hope I can answer it. Because I didn't prepare the bid.
We're deciding to approve certain applications here that don't apply to us.
I think these do.
Yeah, these were all recommended by your roadmaster.
Not here.
What's that?
The single white lines.
Where do we use a single, we don't use a single white line or no wait, on the sides.
On the sides, yeah.
On the sides.
Yep.
Hmm. What's the difference between, uh, same price though?
Yeah, they are.
Hmm.
But the double, the double yellow.
Yeah.
Four inch wide, if you like, the B is.
Essentially double price, yeah.
Plus, plus the, all two tenths.
Right.
I did get them.
Around it, for sure.
So the motion was made, accept the unit price and it was seconded. Is there, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Carol.
The only thing I don't like about the whole deal is the chip seal. You have to, you have to waste the money, take a drive on Boulder Hill Road. Take a drive on Orchard Road. It was put down, uh, less than a year ago. Gone. Do you have money like that to throw away? The township, hey, I could use some too. You could too, right? Oh, I, I, I'm sorry.
Anything else?
No.
Just anything else? Okay, is our motion adjourned?
Make a motion. Adjourn the meeting at, oh gee, twenty minutes till.
Eight thirty-eight.
Nine. Whatever that comes to.
Okay, motion adjourned. It was seconded. In favor say aye. The seconded, the papers say aye.